I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Planning Commission, the City of Escondido, for March 14th, 2023. If you would join me in the flag salute. David's going to lead us. Thank you. Roll call?
Thank you, Chair.
President.
Chair Barbe.
President.
Vice Chair Paul.
Yes, President.
Vice Chair Barber.
Thank you for the promotion.
I mean, I'm sorry.
I'm power hungry. Thank you. Yes, I'm present. That's okay.
I thought so. Commissioner Doan. Commissioner McCarroll. Commissioner Spear. Commissioner Wyler.
Here.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Finestone, do we have any changes in the agenda?
Yes, thank you, Chair Barbe. We do have one change, the public hearing item number, I think it's number two in our agenda packet. Item two has been withdrawn by the applicant, so that will not be heard tonight.
Thank you. Approval of the minutes. Are there any questions, concerns, modifications to the minutes from the commissioners of last meeting?
Move approval of the minutes.
One second.
Roll call?
Chair Barbe.
Approved.
Vice Chair Paul.
Yes, approve.
Commissioner Barber.
Yes.
Commissioner Doan. Commissioner McCarroll. Commissioner Spear. Commissioner Wyler.
Yes.
Okay.
Great. Oral communications?
Nothing.
Nothing at this time. The public hearing PL 220601 has been withdrawn, so we move on to current business, where I believe we're going to have a presentation from staff on VMT, PL 2300133.
Yes, thank you, Chair Barbe. I'd like to introduce our city traffic engineer and our associate traffic engineer in our traffic engineering division, Ed Alberto and Craig Williams. They'll be making a presentation, providing some information to the commission on the vehicle miles traveled program here.
Welcome and thank you for coming.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, commissioners, for your time this evening, for us to present to you Vehicle Miles Traveled. As Adam introduced, my name's Ed Alberto. I'm the city traffic engineer, and with me is Craig Williams, Associate Traffic Engineer, and we are the engineering division with the City of Escondido.
You are it.
We are it. So today, we're going to talk about VMT, and here's a quick summary of what we'll discuss. The timeline of the implementation of Senate Bill 743. We'll talk a little bit about 743. Sequa significance thresholds. What is VMT? Sandag, regional VMT maps. Our transportation impact analysis guideline update. How to calculate project VMT, and then finally go through our VMT mitigation program. So this is a condensed timeline of the last 10 years of a lot of effort that's gone in since the implementation of Senate Bill 743 was signed into law in 2013, which provided changes to SEQA guidelines for transportation impacts. In 2018, the California Office of Planning and Research developed the new SEQA guidelines, and it identified vehicle miles traveled as the most appropriate metric to evaluate transportation impacts. In 2020, the City of Escondido entered an agreement with Farr and Pierce, with Katie Cole as our project manager. Farr and Pierce has worked on VMT implementation since the very beginning and has worked with VMT implementation regionwide. We brought them on board to update our TIA guidelines to implement the new metrics into our standards, and in 2021, the city adopted the new TIA guidelines, and in 2022, we adopted our VMT mitigation program. In leading up to those adoptions, we worked and presented these documents to our Transportation and Community Safety Commission to gain their input and the recommendation to City Council. So what did SB 743 do? Well, it fundamentally changed transportation impact analysis as part of SEQA compliance, shifted the focus away from roadway capacity and towards encouraging alternative modes of transportation and reducing vehicle travel. It promotes public health through active transportation and the reduction of greenhouse gas emissions. Now, prior to Senate Bill 743 for transportation impacts related to SEQA, the thresholds looked at level of service, delay, capacity, and speed reduction. Post Senate Bill 743, these are no longer the metrics for SEQA significance. However, we are still using these metrics for general plan compliance for quality of life standards. As I noted, the Office of Planning and Research established vehicle miles traveled as the metric for measuring significance thresholds for transportation impacts. Vehicle miles traveled, it is literally one vehicle traveling on a roadway for one mile regardless of how many people are in the car. So how do we measure VMT? And the three most typical types of projects you see in the city are residential, office, retail, and industrial, and we measure VMT per capita or per employee. The thresholds for transportation impacts for residential unemployment would be 15% below the regional average. For industrial, it would be at or below the regional average, and for retail, public, and recreational projects, it would be any increase to total area VMT. So this is a kind of a...
I'm sorry, Ed. Can I interrupt? Could you explain how that those were arrived at?
We will get to those in the coming slides.
Thank you.
So Sandag, for the implementation of Senate Bill 743, established some VMT maps. They looked at census tracts regionwide and determined the mean of VMT for the region, and they determined the VMT per census tract regionwide. So you can see in the City of Escondido, the red star is where we're at, in City Hall. This census tract is, has the number 17.4, and that is 17.4 VMT per capita. And as it relates, Sandag determined through modeling that the regional mean is 18.9 VMT per capita, meaning one resident, one employee in that census tract, on average, will drive 18.9 miles in a day. From these maps, you can see the color in green. These are the census tracts that are VMT efficient. They're 50 to 85% of the regional mean for VMT, and as you go to the darker blues, the darkest blue exceeds the 100% of the regional mean for VMT. And looking at 85% is sort of the target for residential unemployment. 16.1 VMT per capita is that target number that they're looking at. And just to provide some bearing on these maps, number one on here is the Palomar Heights Project, a mixed-use development that is pedestrian, bike-friendly, and has access to transit. So the shorter trips would be removed from the roadway by the residents being able to walk, bike, or utilize transit in lieu of driving for those trips. The two other projects on the northern side of the city are recent projects that were approved. Number two is Iris, and number three is Conway. Both projects did have VMT impacts that were mitigated, utilizing our mitigation program to less than significant levels. As I noted, in 2021, we updated our TIA guidelines to implement these new requirements of SEQA for VMT thresholds. We established a dual analysis tract for looking at projects using VMT analysis for the SEQA significance and what we call local mobility analysis when we're determining compliance with our general plan, quality of life standards. It also provides screening criteria, so it screens some project information, determine the size of the project and what level of analysis would be required, if at all. It also provides a TIA scoping memo, and that's when a project first comes in, it initiates that dialogue between staff, traffic engineers, and the developments, traffic engineer, to start the discussion on what level of analysis they will be having and what types of potential impacts the project may have from the start. So looking at the VMT screening criteria, and I'll go over these bullets, define them in the coming slides. So an impact from certain projects can be presumed less than significant. So further analysis would not be required if the project is a small project located in a transit priority area, located in low VMT generating areas, a locally serving retail project, locally serving public facility, or a redevelopment project. Yes. Sorry. So going down the screening criteria, small residential employment projects, these are projects that generate less than 200 daily trips. Located in transit priority area, those are projects within a half-mile walking distance of major transit stops or along a high-quality transit corridor. VMT efficient areas are those areas in green on the Sandag SB 743 VMT maps. A locally serving retail project would be one that is less than 50,000 square feet and expected to draw more than 75% of its customers from the local area. Locally serving public facilities are like transit centers, public schools, libraries, projects that have community benefit. And for redevelopment projects, those are when the net, the net project VMT from the redevelopment is less than the existing use that was previously there. Now, let's look at how do we calculate a project VMT? So for this sample, we're using a multifamily residential project with 54 units. For the general plan housing element, this type of project would have 3.21 residents per unit. Multiplying that by the 54 units, there will be approximately 173 residents in that project. Looking at the Sandag VMT map, you check the census tract where it's located, and it establishes the VMT number associated with that tract. So you take the 173 residents, in this case, we used 18.5 VMT per resident, and you get 3,200 VMT generated by that project. Here's a census tract that we picked, and for this residential project to be, to have less than significant impact, it would need to mitigate to 16.1 VMT. So now, we establish the target VMT by looking at the regional mean of 16.1, multiply that by the number of residents, and you get 2,779 VMT. You take the difference between the project VMT and the target VMT, and that's the amount of VMT that needs to be reduced in order for the project to be less than significant. Now, looking at our VMT mitigation program, this was established, again, using Farr and Pierce as our consultant, with guidance from CAPCOA, the California Air Pollution Control Officers Association, and using, utilizing their handbook for analyzing greenhouse gas emissions reduction, assessing climate vulnerabilities, and advancing health and equity, or the GHG handbook. So to mitigate VMT, you either have to reduce the number of trips or reduce the distance of travel. To do that, you would need changes in the project by implementing bike share, telework, accessibility to transit, or improving the surrounding active transportation modes. Our VMT mitigation program focuses on pedestrian, bicycle, and transit. For pedestrian network, we look at increasing the sidewalk coverage or improving existing pedestrian infrastructure. Bicycle improvements, we're looking at increasing bike facility coverage, and for transit, we look at upgrading the type of bus stop. And as, just to note, for the mitigation program, we're looking at projects that will be in addition to any previously funded project, so they can use like a project or infrastructure improvement that's already funded by CIP or some other funding sources. It would need to be in addition to that. So part of our menu in our VMT mitigation program for sidewalk coverage staff evaluated some sidewalk gap projects where we can kind of close the gap, and if a project decided to implement any one of these or construct any one of these projects, this is the corresponding length of sidewalk gap closure and the associated reduction of VMT that that would establish. And again, for the, a menu for the pedestrian infrastructure, we're looking at, and this is just a sample of several different possibilities, high-visibility crosswalks, upgrading pedestrian signal upgrades, like countdown pedestrian heads and accessible pedestrian signals, the chirping push buttons, or installing intersection curb ramps. And these are the units measured by each, each improvement and the corresponding VMT reduction. For the bike network improvements, you'd be looking at installing new bike, bike facilities or upgrading from a lesser facility to a higher one. So class ones are separated bike paths. Class fours are the protected bike lanes. Class two is your standard bike stripe, and class three is just the shared, share the road bicycle routes through the city. And then with regards to the transit, we look at upgrading a standard bus bench to a sheltered stop, provided that all of NCTD's criteria is met. And one, one upgrade would allot a 50 VMT reduction. So to circle back to our sample calculation, this project would need to reduce by 421 VMT. And utilizing our VMT mitigation program, just kind of going down the table, they need to reduce by 421 as you implement each project. So if they chose to install 1,750 feet of sidewalk, it'd be 101 VMT reduction. Subtract that from 421 and onwards down. So in this scenario, the project installed PED signals at three intersections, curb ramps at three corners, a mile of new bike lane, and upgraded one transit stop, and netted them minus five VMT for that project, bringing them to less than significant for their impact with regards to SEQA. Now, our VMT mitigation program is a living program where we're still, we evaluate strategies to see where we can add additional mitigation measures or programs to incorporate in the future. So in the future, we may look at providing subsidized transit passes, expanding the transit network, providing community-based travel planning, implementing a transportation demand management program, or even an on-demand shuttle to the, for the city. And with that, are there any questions?
Questions? Commissioner Barber?
I'll have one question. If the developer doesn't participate or participate fully in the mitigation program, then what is the alternative for the developer?
I'd say they would need to work with staff to develop a mitigation strategy that, I mean, that we would support, or did I want to jump in on that?
Sure. I can probably provide a little bit of additional information. Based on SEQA and the need to mitigate impacts, they would, if they can't or choose not to use the mitigation program, there may be other mitigation that they can propose that's different from or not within the program that would have the impact or have the effect of reducing VMT. However, there is not an option necessarily to say, nope, I'm not going to mitigate anything and just forget it. They would, that would be something that would trigger the need for an EIR and a statement of overriding considerations that the benefits of the project are such that they outweigh the impact. If there is mitigation available, though, that is the route that would be proposed or that would be required.
Thank you. That's my only question.
Commissioner Paul?
Yeah, go back to the question I had before.
Could you repeat your question?
Yeah, you had a criteria for, the threshold criteria, and my question was, how did you arrive at that criteria, at those thresholds?
These are the thresholds established by the California Office of Planning and Research.
Thank you.
So OPR drives it. Commissioner Wyler?
I've got a couple of questions. One of them has to do with LOS. So LOS and that analysis is because it's in the general plan, it's part of the quality of life. Is the general, when we update the transportation portion or mobility element of the general plan, is that going to get removed at some point? I mean, that's what's in there today, but if we're looking at a different way of determining what traffic impacts are, is that going to be adjusted in some way, or are we kind of got to hit both criteria like we do now?
So my, my understanding at this point is that we are needing to hit both criteria. You've got impacts to, to transportation per SEQA, which really have to do with the amount of vehicles on the road at a, or the amount of miles traveled, which then kind of gets towards the greenhouse gas reduction targets, et cetera. That is, you know, it's one, one way to get at, to, to help reduce the greenhouse, greenhouse gas emissions is by encouraging infill development that puts less vehicle miles on the road. The, the LOS thresholds are based on quality of life standards that, that take into account the goals of not having people sitting in their car, taking forever to get here and there, widen, so that it would, it would trigger the need to potentially widen roads, improve intersections, et cetera. They are two different aspects, but they are both required at this point.
At some point, are the, I guess, the methodology by which you determine level of service, is that going to change? Because the intent is, all right, there's other modes of transportation that are going to be available, therefore, people are going to hopefully be bicycling, they're going to take mass transit, those sort of things. So does, does the methodology for determining the LOS actually get modified as we move into the future and implement these things that are coming out of, you know, vehicle miles traveled?
Yeah.
I mean, it's very broad. I get it. I understand.
At this time, the way level of service is determined for vehicles and capacity delay and speed would not change unless there is a shift in the highway capacity manual or some other guiding, guiding documents.
Okay.
It is something, though, that we may be able, you know, we will, when we do an update to our general plan on, you know, on whatever that cycle would wind up being, we do look at any of these issues and determine, are these thresholds and are these quality of life standards where we want to be as a city. So it's a policy decision for, for our council to make ultimately, and if they have different takes on it than, than is currently in there, that's their purview to make those modifications.
Right, and it seems like, you know, as these things get implemented and our land use patterns start to change, you know, we assume 10 trips per single-family home or six trips per multifamily unit. Are those trip generation rates going to change, or is that like, all right, that's a Sandag deal, when they change it down there, we'll implement whatever it is that they come up with? I'm just wondering if those discussions are kind of happening.
So I think we still rely on Sandag's not-too-brief analysis, or, or whatever, what's it called, Ed?
I think that's our start, is the Sandag not-so-brief.
Right.
Traffic trip generation table. But there's, you know, there's several sources we could take a look at. There's that, the ITE Trip Generation Manual. If they're site-specific, like a unique type of development, have them...
I just haven't noticed those being modified that much, and maybe they have over the years. I just haven't noticed it because I deal with the primary ones when we're looking at projects. I was just wondering if, you know, you guys being involved in this, is there discussion about modifying that, or is it just, we're just not there yet?
I think we're just not there yet.
Okay.
Sandag's not-so-brief guide is, is from 2001, I believe, so.
Exactly. I know it's been around for a while.
Yeah, that's dated. I mean, how, excuse me, but how would that take into account, say, you know, the increase of remote workers and therefore not traveling, I mean, those sorts of considerations for policy? Is that, that's also would be at the Sandag level, or?
I'm not sure that Sandag has prepared or provided any guidance to that. I don't know.
Awesome. It's possible that ITE has looked at it. I don't, yeah, I don't know of a current study to point my finger to right now.
Yeah, I would just say every once in a while, I think we've seen a use or a combined use that doesn't quite fit well with Sandag's trip generation tables, and we've been presented with generate, trip generation numbers from other ITE guidelines and/or other sources. And so, you know, we, we've worked with those. But I'd say broadly, pretty broadly, Sandag's is what's used probably mostly county-wide.
There'd be like mixed use, mixed use reductions and things like that, the synergy of the development, depending on how that interacts, so.
Sorry. Sorry, Commissioner.
If I could, there are, to your point about, we've typically looked at vehicular level of service, and we're not really looking, we have not looked at bicycle level of service, for example, or pedestrian level of service. There are methodologies for us to study those. There is a bicycle level of stress analysis. We will be getting started in the next month or so on a comprehensive active transportation study for the city, and both of those active transportation methodologies, we're asking the consultant to do that for the city itself. So we'll not only have an LOS measure for the streets within a vehicular LOS, we'll also have a bicycle and pedestrian LOS for the streets in the city. So we're kind of, we'll be doing what you're, what you're suggesting, yeah.
Yeah, I was just curious if those discussions were happening, and then, you know, with the increase in, in e-bike usage, it would seem like that's getting a few people that, you know, are right on the verge of, oh, I wouldn't mind bicycling to work or wherever, but it's just too much effort and I'm all sweaty by the time I get to work. But the e-bike, oh, now I got an e-bike, huh? That changes your world, because now I can get up and down the hill, and it's not that big of a deal. I'm just kind of wondering if we're seeing this dynamic switch, change as technology gets better and, and these sort of things kind of come into play, or are people not moving quite as quickly to the e-bike? I see the kids on it, but there's the difference. When I was a kid, we all rode our bikes to school. I mean, the bike racks were full, and then they became empty because everybody was, all the kids were getting dropped off at school. That seems to be changing again because I see kids on e-bikes riding their bikes to school. I just didn't know if, if that actually does come into play. I don't expect an answer, but it was just something that, you know, observation as I go from here to there.
And actually, we will be looking at that in this strat, the active transportation strategy. So it's a, it's a very good point.
Great, thank you. Any other comments, questions? I just had, I heard an allusion to a transportation commission?
Our Transportation and Community Safety Commission, yes.
Commission. There's actually a commission that, that does that? I was not aware of that, that's all. And that's an active currently?
Yes, quarterly.
Okay, great, thanks. That was my only question.
My only comment would be to say, though, when I was first introduced to the VMT, I thought this is another example of state overreach, and I didn't like the cars that were being dealt to the city. But I think staff has done a heroic job in developing what I think could be a workable program and a win-win for everyone. So I want to commend staff.
Thank you.
If I can add to that, I will say that we and our engineering folks, particularly our traffic engineering team, have gotten a lot of praise for the work they've done on this. They've been reached out to by other jurisdictions, other agencies partnering potentially with other, other agencies to assist and maybe join or give, give some guidance on what we've done that's worked here and that may be appropriate or applicable to other places. But it's definitely a report or a program, that exchange program, that's really been well-received by both city, other agencies, and the development community.
And just one more, just curious about the study that you'll be doing in support of the active transportation. What's the timeframe on that? Is that like over the next two years, one year, five years?
We've estimated about 18 months.
Oh, okay, good. So we can, would be great if we could have a report out on that, so to speak.
We'd be happy to give you some progress updates.
If that's of interest to...
How often you'd like to hear them?
Okay. Thank you very much. Anything else?
I think I publicly commended the program at the city, when it was presented, sent it to the city council.
Thank you. All right. Well, thank you very much for your presentation. It's really appreciated. Pretty, very thorough. So future agenda items, does, that's, that's on my agenda anyway.
That's the spot for any of the commissioners to identify any agenda items that they would be interested in.
I have nothing to suggest.
Thank you, Commissioner Paul. Any oral communications? None that I'm aware of. None that I'm aware of? No? Okay. Planning commissioners, any comments, thoughts going forward? No? Okay, city planners report?
Thank you. So just the heads up, we do have a meeting on the 28th. There is one public hearing item that's been scheduled for that, that date. It's West Coast Arborists, Master and Precise Development Plan modification for a facility that they proposed, so that'll be coming on the 28th. I don't believe there's any other items, I know there's no other public hearing items at this point. We will likely be having a meeting on April 11th as well, and just for the chair and vice chair's information, Andrew Firestein, our director, will be, will be sitting in this chair for those meetings.
Okay, great. And just for everyone's information, I won't be here for the next meeting, so Commissioner Paul will be, Vice Chair Paul will be leading the way. And I believe that's it. Word adjourned.